My mother's turning eighty and she's like, on the twentieth, and she's like, we're not gonna-
All rise, please.
It's just another day.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors' regular meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Before we started tonight, we met in executive session. Well, the first thing we did was interview one individual for the Environmental Advisory Council, and we will move on that in a little bit. And then we met in executive session for two matters of litigation, one involving a zoning matter and the other involving Verizon. So both those issues are still pending. Okay, before we get going with the regular meeting, we have a presentation from the green energy, a green energy presentation by Jim Baldassari and Curtis Sawyer. Okay, you guys, you're on.
Curtis, you do the presentation.
Okay. And Mr. Sawyer, feel free to remove your mask if you feel comfortable doing so. So is there somebody who had a question?
Public comment?
Public comment will follow after the two presentations. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight about a solar success story. Inveccional wisdom used to be that solar was the virtuous choice, but it was expensive. Well, that's no longer the case. With the passage of time and the improvement in the cost of solar, it's now, as the International Energy Agency observed in two thousand and twenty, solar newly installed is producing the cheapest electricity in the history of the world. So we want to share with you tonight the experience of another local municipality and their decision to move to solar. In May of two thousand and twenty-one, West Rock Hill Township completed their project and became one hundred percent solar. Now, by that I mean they are supplying all the electrical needs of the municipality with the solar installation that they did, and they're the first in the Commonwealth to do that. They've installed a ground-mounted system. It's a just over seventy kilowatt system, which meets all of their needs. It does their administration building, their public works, streetlights, stoplights, their electric car charging station. It's one hundred and eighty panels, and as you can see in the picture, basically it's two long lines tilted to face the sun. This is right behind their administration building there in West Rock Hill. They've designed it so that there are no impervious surfaces, and they're going to plant native plants around it and have it as a little educational center. Their total system cost was one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and this was paid out of their funds. They didn't finance this particular project. They're going to save about fifteen thousand dollars a year in the offset to their electricity cost, and they're going to generate SRECs, solar renewable energy credits, and those vary over the course of time in price. You can sell those on the open market. So right now, that's a value of about three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars a year. So even without the SRECs, and they did not justify the project on the basis of the SRECs, but even without the SRECs, the payback period is about eleven years. And if you do the math on the internal rate of return, so if they had invested that one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in something else that generated fifteen grand a year, that's about an eleven percent return over about thirty-five years. Now, the system is guaranteed for twenty-five, but these kinds of panels last in excess of thirty-five years. So they will continue producing beyond that point, but we did the math at the thirty-five-year point. While they didn't choose to finance it, these kinds of systems can be financed, and there are some structures that might allow for the utilization of a federal income tax credit. Now, obviously, as a municipality, they don't pay income taxes, but you can transfer the ownership to someone else, have them recoup the investment tax credit and pass it along in rent. They didn't bother with any of those complications. There are economies of scale. As you scale these up, they do not cost proportionally more to do. If you can take advantage of roof-mounted, that's somewhat less expensive than ground-mounted because you don't have to have all the structure that they built. And because in Pennsylvania, we do have net metering, your savings are coming in literally as you use it. So you don't have to wait until some future date to realize your savings. So what they demonstrated and what we wanted to communicate tonight is that solar electric is practically feasible and economically advantageous at the present time. You get a reasonable payback period, you get a very good return on your money, and of course, the environmental benefits are immediate. So the calculus has become much easier. Can you go green and be virtuous and save money at the same time? Yes. And that's what West Rock Hill has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Nope, you're good. Thank you. We're definitely looking into this, especially for our new building, new rec building. Okay, next item on the agenda, resolution for single-use plastics. Heidi Schiaver has presented a resolution. Everyone had a chance to review it?
Yep.
Do we have any thoughts?
Board?
I think it's great.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we made our commitment for, ready for one hundred. We're trying to move on a lot of our environmental initiatives, and I think this fits in perfectly. Thank you.
Wonderful. That's fantastic. Will you consider just a slight amendment to the one of the last whereas, where it says now Doylestown Township and the Environmental Advisory Council have determined, would you permit an amendment such Doylestown Township with recommendation of the Environmental Advisory Council has determined that the, is that okay?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I just had to get a copy of it in front of me. Sorry.
That's okay. The last whereas?
Yes.
Where it starts, Doylestown Township and the Environmental Advisory Council, so on?
Yes.
Would you permit this amendment, Doylestown Township with the recommendation of the Environmental Advisory Council has determined? Is that okay?
Of course. That's perfect.
Great.
Yes.
Everyone okay with that little amendment? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna-
I'll make a motion to-
You're gonna take a motion that you can advertise it?
No, you don't need to advertise. It's a resolution. No, you can-
I'll make a motion to approve it with the change that Barb indicated. I would like to second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Schiaver.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your support. Thank you.
We did, you did all the legwork. You made it easy for us, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next item, visitors and public comment. I see some folks here that, please take the podium. You need to identify who you are, your address, please, and feel free to remove your mask to speak if you feel comfortable doing so.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Chang, and I live in Doylestown Borough. I'm the chair of Buck's Voices, a Bucks County voter engagement group with over seventeen hundred members. We're a non, we are not affiliated with any political party. Our mission is to inform, engage, and mobilize our community to realize the ideals of our democracy, a government that represents all of us and creates a progressive and just society where everyone can realize their full potential. Our vision is that our elected officials honor their oath of office, discharge their duties with integrity, and work to strengthen and improve our government so that it becomes a fully realized representative democracy, one that is inclusive of and sustained by all. We're here tonight to express our grave concern, Ms. Santa Cecilia, about your fitness for the office of Doylestown Township Supervisor. By distributing a race-baiting homophobic flyer within the school district and in the community, you committed an unethical and deceitful act, unworthy of an elected public official. Your action, however loco, however individualized, contributes to the unraveling of our democracy and our trust in our government. Worse yet, your act of spreading white supremacist talking points is an unforgivable attempt at mainstreaming hate speech. You are doing great harm to our community. You cannot continue to sit on the board as the Doylestown Township Supervisor. The community does not condone your egregious behavior, nor do we support your abhorrent divisive rhetoric. We hope you will heed all the calls for your resignation. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay. Hearing none further. I'm gonna make the announcements that are in our agenda. The next meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors is scheduled for Tuesday, February fifteenth at seven P. M. Christmas tree drop-off. You can still do that at the New Burton Road entrance to Central Park, and you can do that until January thirty-first. Next item on the agenda is approval of the reorganization meeting minutes from January third, two thousand and twenty-two. So everyone had an opportunity to review them.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the correspondence from the EAC, recognition of the Parks Department. Janine Mitchell sent a nice memo to the board regarding Chris Mason. Everyone had a chance to review it. Thank you, Janine Mitchell, for recognizing Chris Mason and his invaluable contributions to the EAC efforts. Can we make sure Chris, that gets into Chris's file?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, reports from the solicitor.
Actually, you missed the EAC resignations.
Oh, thank you. EAC resignations, Ms. Cassis and Mr. Brooks. Is there a motion to accept the resignations in tandem from Ms. Cassis? And I know Ms. Mitchell has represented on behalf of Mr. Brooks.
I would like to make that motion. Sadly, both of them contributed a lot to our EAC.
Sir, a second?
I'd like to make them.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They will be missed. All right, now solicitor.
If I may, I will remove my mask temporarily so I-
Please.
People can hear what I'm going to say. Board will recall several months ago that Del Valle University and Terrain made a presentation to the Board of Supervisors concerning some ideas they were thinking about doing as far as renovating and redoing and expanding the farmer's market off of Lower State Road that had been done, that had been closed now for quite a while. Board was very receptive to the proposal. I think you had a good number of neighbors and people here were also receptive. Following that discussion, we were charged, the manager and I, as well as your planner, to meet with them and sort of work through an ordinance that would be available to them to make use of their proposal. We drafted that ordinance back and forth with input from Terrain and also with input from the various people I just mentioned. And then it was, they made a present, Terrain made a presentation to the Planning Commission and also received excellent support from the, from the commission concerning the project, and also they were supportive of the draft of the ordinance with a minor modification that was made, and there's no problem with the, from the perspective of Terrain. What you see in front of you is adding an additional section to the definitions of the uses, which in this case is college and university. So this just provides an additional element of the use called college or university. It does not create any special zoning because obviously it's going to be applicable to all of the folks that are institutional as far as their zoning, although there may not be many that have university or college status. So with that in mind, I think the action we're seeking tonight is your comment, first of all, and secondly, to authorize the appropriate adjustments to your ordinance for public hearing in the future.
Thoughts?
I mean, I'm-
You're big on it.
Yeah, I, I'm a little biased. I think, yeah, I think, I agree with that.
Do we need a motion to that?
Motion to authorize me to advertise the ordinance for your action now will be in March because it has to go to the various planning commissions, and there's a thirty-day period. So you'll have a hearing at your March meeting.
I'd like to make the motion to advertise.
I think she just did.
Oh, you did?
I'll, well, I'll-
I'll second then.
Okay.
I do have one question for Mr. Garten. The document in front of us, the, all three pages are being added to the ordinance, correct? Or is it just certain sections of-
No, it's pages one and two, three will be added to the ordinance.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood exactly what was going on. Thank you.
The Planning Commission did a very good job going through the ordinance as well.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Oops, okay, am I up to, hang on, let me see. Chief?
Just a quick update. We are scheduled for our accreditation mock assessment for this Thursday, and we're on the calendar for their final assessment on February seventeenth and eighteenth. So things are moving well, and we're well ahead of schedule.
Good. Thank you. I'm gonna stop the regular meeting right now. I see Margaret Quinn just walked in, and she's asked to be recognized.
Thank you.
You may take your mask off. You have to go to the podium and introduce yourself and state your business.
Hi, good after, good evening, and thank you for interrupting your business, and I apologize for being late. My name is Margaret Quinn. I'm a fifty-year resident of the township. I've had the privilege of raising my children here, and I hope to God they come back and live here one day. I am here to address you, Nancy. Nancy, when I came in second, when I ran for state senate, you were one of the first people to reach out to me. You helped me literally get my house back in order so I could climb over boxes. You helped me with my resume when it was time for me to come up for air and look to my next position. I recognize the talent, the creativity, and the generosity you have in spirit. But what I don't recognize are the actions that you took in October that have been so hurtful to this community. Your apology to this board in December actually came short of apologizing to those people who were harmed, those people who didn't feel like they belong or they're welcomed in this community. My recollection is that you apologized for the problems, the chaos, and the disruption brought to this board. Nancy, your continued presence on this board just keeps perpetuating that at every meeting. I encouraged you to run for this position. I supported you with time, advice, and resources. We had fun doing that, and I believe in the best interest of this township that you should step aside. And it brings me just pain to say that, Nancy. I know you're a good woman, and you've made some bad decisions here. I have to add that, as you apologized and you said that people are being deceived, I've been waiting and watching and looking for the grand deception and some type of information that's going to be brought forward. Because I served for ten years on the CB Cares Board. I put my time, my energy, my resources into that too, and I loved the work that I thought we were doing. If there's been work that's been changed since I left the board, if there's been work that was being done subversively while I was on the board, that needs to come out in a public fashion. That does not need to be done in a stealth method to select people. And I believe that, for those reasons, it would serve the community best, in a healing way, for you to step aside and continue to use your talents, your creativity, and your generosity in other ways. Thank you.
All right, township engineer?
Nothing to add.
Manager?
Yes. There's a recommendation, sorry, let me take my mask off. There's a recommendation that the Park Recreation Open Space Committee that we'd formed is along with the Turk Road Bike Hike Feasibility Study Committee. Both of those committees have completed their work in late two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, and it's recommended that we sunset those. Those were just committees that the board formed to address those feasibility studies, and, you know, their work is done. So suggestion that perhaps the board officially sunset those two committees.
Is there a motion to sunset the two committees? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, training requests. We've read the memos. Any questions, people?
There's two, one for Erin and myself, for APMM, and Karen and Lisa.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the training requests? I'll make them-
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Director of Operations?
Yeah, I have a number of items, quickly. The first is the Chapman Road Bridge proposals. One is from Michael Baker International. This is for, as the board recalls that we are trying to get this project funded through the PennDOT Transportation Improvement Program. As such, if we have to do so, we've got to follow the PennDOT guidelines. We reached out to Michael Baker International, who originally designed the bridge replacement project that got shelved, or well, was shelved for Time in the Future based on budget programming. And since we found out that we could fund this through the tip, we basically asked Baker to come back and give us a proposal for revised design plans and PennDOT approvals, and then the bidding process through the PennDOT Electronic Bidding System. The proposal is basically a base bid of one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, five hundred and nine, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars with two additional pieces, additional services, one for geotechnical services totaling seventeen thousand, six hundred, and for right-of-way exhibits totaling ten thousand, four hundred. All total, the project cost for design services, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. I'm asking the board to approve this with discretion that we would be allowed to act on the two additional pieces as recommended, either required by PennDOT or Panone.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this request? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dave.
The second item is a proposal from Panone. This also is for the Chapman Road Bridge. This is for what is called the National Environmental Policy Act documentation. This was a requirement that Panone is going to prepare all the documents in accordance with PennDOT criteria, the National Bridge and Railway Program Agreement, and things like we need on the environmental end for the permitting of this. The proposal totals seven thousand, three hundred dollars. That's a lump sum fee. I'm asking for the board's approval for that scope of work.
Is there a reason why Baker can't accomplish this as well, that we have to break it out into two different bids?
I know that Panone has been doing all of our permitting for our bridges, and, and it just seemed that's the logical, that was a logical thing to do, to have them do that. They've, they've probably done the permitting for this already, and so they're picking up, just as Baker's picking up the design, and we're not going out and rebidding the design, Panone has done the permitting, and we're gonna have them just continue with that process.
Is better, better practice to have the permitting and not the, to be two separate entities anyway?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Final, next, my next item is the replacement of our phone system. Back in two thousand and nineteen, we basically contracted with Mitel to provide us with phone equipment and services and line services. We basically, that contract is now expired. Basically, subgroup committee of Rick Shea, Margaret Treger, and Holly Dodson went out and did all the research. They're the primary users of the phones on a daily basis. They know the ins and outs. They set the announcements and things like that, the out-of-office messages, and they did research. We obtained four proposals, as outlined in the memo that was provided to the board. Galco Business Communications is the lowest price at three hundred and seventy-eight dollars per month on a thirty-six-month contract. That is thirteen thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. There's also a one-time charge fee for equipment at eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. I'm asking for the board's approval to contract with Galco Business Communications for a three-year term for purchase of equipment, installation, and for the line charges for our phone system.
So we own this at the end of three years?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about maintenance after that? Do we have an opportunity to renew with these folks, or?
Yes, there, yes, there's maintenance for the thirty-six months, and then we can-
Okay, for, I get it.
And then we can, maintenance, a maintenance agreement after that.
Well, hopefully the equipment is still-
Correct.
Or, let's say, let's hope the equipment is not obsolete by that time.
Correct.
And we can continue using it. All right, is there a motion to approve this contract? Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you to all the folks who put in the hard work to do, to make this, make this offering. That's great. It's a lot.
They did, they really did. Yes, they did. It was a lot of research, and they are quite informed and know what they want in the phone system. My final item is, and I apologize that I lost you, that scope of work. My printout, so, as you know, we contracted with Robotics in two thousand and eighteen to provide our roadway pavement management survey, which is basically a robotic survey, and they drive the roads. We are going to, as we reported to you through the budget process last year, that we were going to do this again this year. We received a proposal from Panone. The reason why I received the proposal from Panone is that Robotics is now contracting with local engineering firms to do the data collection. That information is again given back to Robotics and processed, and then we receive the model back. So we received a proposal from Panone for the roadway, the pavement management survey. The total cost for that is eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, asking for the board's approval of that proposal to do that work this year.
Will there be any additional costs from Robotics on generating the new model for them, or is that part of our-
No, that's, that's an all-in cost.
All-in?
Yes, that's an all-in cost to get the model, survey and the model.
Okay.
What happened to the first survey?
We still have it, and we'll have that. That's like, that's historical, so that's two thousand and eighteen, and so then we'll compare the two thousand and eighteen to the two thousand and twenty-two and see what roads have degraded or gotten better. So now we'll, and that's the plan, to do like a three-year cycle.
Okay.
Okay, so we have historical data.
So here's my question. If the, the first go-around of the survey showed, are these roads really need to be done now? Have those roads been done now?
No.
Are they still out there?
No, they're still out there. We reported, we got like-
Some. I mean, we've done-
Thirty-three percent. We, oh, we've done some, yeah. We've done, since two thousand and eighteen, we've prob, I don't know the exact amount of roads, the miles we paved.
But we went over that in the budget process, and we showed there were-
Correct.
Significant. Last year alone, we did almost seven miles, right?
It should show Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge, because that's one of the ones noted that needed dire work.
But if we already know what roads are messed up, and that they all haven't been fixed yet, and they're already ranked, why do we need to do this ranking again?
Well, we've always had a, we've always had a annual road inspection process. We've just now taken it from people, eyes on the street, to a, a subjective analog system which Robotics has developed and is starting to become the standard. Okay? It's a, you know, an AI type of, artificial intelligence type analysis that, you know, looks at everything. looks at everything. So we've always done annual inspections, we've just gone from people to-
I know, I've been on about 20 of them, what, 15?
Yeah, right.
I know, but here's, I still have, the question is still the same. If we already know, like from 2018, the bad roads and they've been, you know, ranked, then why do we have to do this now again because we, they haven't all been fixed from the 2018?
Oh, I understand, I understand that. It's just that we've always had, been required to conduct it.
It doesn't matter that we've always had it. I'm asking why they, why we're doing it again if we haven't already repaired what we know needs to be repaired?
But I think one of the things that we observed in the budget work session process with the mapping that Robotics has is there were roads that were sort of in the middle and through the robotics process, we'll know if they're still there or if they've deteriorated further.
Of course they did.
You know.
They don't get better by themselves.
But they may have stayed the same. They may not, you know, based on the criteria.
Right.
And I think that, that information is helpful in the budgeting process and everything.
Okay. I think in the budgeting process, Dave, because you had met with Dan and I, you had five rankings, and then when you did the budget meeting, you broke it down to three ratings, like, you know, okay, in the middle, and then like really terrible. And like, I think about a third of our roads, Dan, do you remember, were, were, really needed to be done, and I can't believe you've done a third of those roads. So what Barbara said is if those aren't fixed yet, why are we paying for another survey until those are fixed at least? Because we're not, I don't think we're going to get to the ones in the meet, in the middle yet.
I didn't say not to do it, I just was asking why.
Yeah, I'm not saying-
I-
I'm just trying to see whether we need to pay for the survey, I guess, if we already know there's problems.
Go ahead, if you want to interject.
So the one thing is we'll be able to see some of the progress that was made, which we think is important. The other thing is it's going to provide a really good, clear, objective visual for folks to look, you know, on the website to see the progress and to also see there are some roads that will deteriorate quicker than other roads because of use, some things that people just don't, you know, understand until you kind of put it visually. The other thing is it's going to help us to categorize, after we get through the really bad roads and we're in the same neighborhood, does it make sense to work or repair another road? And it helps us to categorize that and what the improvements are so we can put a protocol together to make sure we're making the most bang for the buck. So it's an analytic tool that we can use and we can continue to use it so that we're showing that we're progressing the right way and essentially getting the most bang for the buck.
Okay. That answers my question.
Yeah, I don't necessarily want to speak for them either, but it also gives us valuable data on what roads are de, at what rate are roads degrading, because there are possible roads over the course of 10 years that this will show us, oh, just picking one, for instance, Pebble Run degrades faster than Turk does, to help us plan for the future.
Okay.
One more item to point out, the proposals for $11,675, we have 77 miles of roads, that's $150 a mile.
Yeah, that's-
Okay, and you can't get every inch of the, of the township surveyed for $150 if you put somebody in a car.
But our road trips are free. I'm kidding. I'm totally, I'm satisfied my question.
I ask, will it slow down when we start to pave and fix the roads? Do we have to wait for the survey? I mean, is it going to impact like putting it out for bid and when we start to pave?
No, I, well, we know, we've, we've got a good handle on, on the program this year, and that's Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge, and then we've got other roads that we want to make, you know, look at and we know based on the 18 survey. So no, it doesn't stop us this year, we're going to move forward.
All right, is there a motion to approve the-
I think Chief Logan had a comment which might be-
I do have a quick question, and I hate crossing different departments, but my question is, what are we, what equipment does Panone need in order to accomplish this and how do they do it? Because I'm thinking that, you know, the police department is out there driving around these roads constantly. Is there anything that we can equip on our vehicles that can be added to robotics to save you money year after year after year? And we could do it every year then.
It's not necessarily, so when we do the, the program, it's best to run certain routes and to go a certain, you know, start point A, go to point B. The fear with asking, you know, the police to do it is if all of a sudden there's an emergency or something arises that kind of skews that, and then you could potentially lose that data, the continuity of the data. So essentially what we do is we mount cameras, we drive the routes, and the cameras pick up what's needed, and essentially we follow a GPS mapping of telling us what routes to go. It's all done, you know, upfront. That was the only problem that we've had in the past with utilizing township employees or police staff, is if something does arise and causes, you know, differentiation in that, that mapping, we sometimes lose some continuity in the data.
But I assume it needs to be done during daylight hours?
It has to be done during daylight hours, and there's also weather conditions that we like to, you know, make sure that we're not going to have some bad data due to a cloudy day or, so there's, there's different things that we'd like to take into account.
And how long do you think it would take to do this?
It's going to be about a week of driving, and then it'll be data interpretation and analysis.
So eight hours a day?
Correct.
So just keep this in mind, and I'm not telling you what to do, but we could pay an officer out there eight hours a day for a week to get it done, probably cheaper than $11,000.
Well, the $11,000 is not ju, I mean, the, the component of the actual recording of the data is very minimal. If you, you know, you, we're going to utilize a very low-cost employee to do it, et cetera. But that, that's the problem that we have with asking someone.
Just trying to help out one department to another.
Right, and I think in the future, as the AI and, and the equipment becomes a little bit more intelligent, I think you will be able to have passive, where they can work hand in hand and it can almost be continuously updated, but the technology's just not there yet.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve the request?
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
All right, new business, Pebble Ridge-
Supervisors.
Supervisors, comments. All right, Nancy, let's start with you. Anything?
I have no comment.
All right, Jen?
Well, we had at the executive session earlier on, an interview with a gentleman named Chad Clem for the EAC. He had a very impressive resume, and I would like to move to appoint him to the EAC at this time.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He was very impressive, I agree.
Also, I would like to personally thank Marty Brooks and Tanya Cassis for all of their hard work on the EAC over the many, many, many years, especially Marty. He, Marty was, is an amazing tree expert, and he contributed so much to the EAC's knowledge of, of our trees. And Tanya just overall has been just an amazing person, helping the EAC develop a lot of their programs, and both of them will be missed. Ann Woodbury had, had left the EAC, I think last month, we announced her leaving the EAC as well, and that again will, will be a big blow to the EAC. Ann was a, Ann is a very hardworking person and was very hardworking at the EAC and brought a lot of projects to the township, and I hope they will continue to participate even if they aren't members of the EAC anymore. The Pension Advisory Committee meeting, we had, at that meeting this month, we had an update on the transition of our pension. We discussed the investment policy statement, which the board might recall, we updated not too long ago, but the Pension Advisory Committee is looking to make a few small changes to make it align with our new pension plan. That will be submitted in the future to the Board of Supervisors. And I was happy to be on the Building Committee call this time, and we discussed, I'm sure the EAC members would love, love to hear this, we discussed the geothermal possibilities as well as feasibility studies for solar. So we are working to, to work, to work towards those goals for Ready for 100. And I think the last I heard from the Building Committee, Barbara, you can correct me, is we're waiting for an updated cost estimate?
And we got it today.
Excellent.
And I thought we should deal with it next month because we, it missed the agenda.
Okay.
But we're happy to share that with you, you know, as of course, but we won't be considering it for tonight because it didn't make the agenda, okay?
Yep, and that's all my-
And thank you. Okay, Ryan?
Met with Park and Rec, nothing really to update on that. You know, the Park and Rec Board continues to do tremendous work. I just, you know, I wasn't going to say anything, and I'm just sitting here kind of just, I'm, I'm continually frustrated and, and I was waiting and hoping that Nancy, you were finally going to make the public comment. You've told me you were going to make every single meeting since December. I've talked to you before every one of those meetings and you've said, you know, I'm, I'm going to say something, and I, you know, it, it makes no bearing, I'm not going to talk about the ins and outs of what happened, but I am going to say that it is harder to work with you today than it was in December, because this avoidance of actually addressing the situation and taking accountability, or again, as Marguerite said, sharing the things none of us know with the public, and then just thinking we can go about normal business and, and it's business as usual, you know, it, I don't know, it, maybe I'm, sitting alone on this, but it, I find it very hard to be able to maintain a working relationship with you and just go about daily business as if nothing has happened. And then you sit there and you say nothing, and, and we're the ones that are dealing with the, the calls from residents, the emails from residents, the taking on the township commissions because people don't want to serve with you, and you still say nothing. And if you don't feel you did anything wrong, then get behind the mic and just say that. But don't sit in a, in a private, in a executive session and say, just so you know, upon advisement of my lawyer, I won't be saying anything. That is such a cop-out for me, and I, I just, I need you to know that, and I've told you that on the phone, when you said that to me on the phone, you said, my lawyer's advised me. Well, of course a lawyer's going to advise you, because your lawyer's not making sure that you're being accountable for your actions, a lawyer's not thinking about your character and your integrity, a lawyer's doing what a lawyer's going to tell you to do, not say anything. But at the end of the day, is that how you want to represent this township? You know, you, you've been told a thousand times over to resign. Clearly, that's not something you're looking to do. And that's your pro, nobody can force you to resign, but I think you need to know that for me, I'm not just going to go back to working with you like there was no issue and, and it's just, and you think that everything's just going to be brushed away. I can't do that. I can't do that, and, and I'm, I wasn't even going to say anything, I don't have anything prepared right now, so I, you know, I'm probably misspeaking a little, but I'm, I'm so frustrated that you had that group come in tonight, and then you had a state senator, and if, and if you say that there's all these people that are in your corner, where are they? Why haven't they showed up in any meetings to talk about that you did the right thing? Like, where are these people? You know, it's just, it's really hard. Every single meeting since December, we've, the meetings are monopolized by what you did, and then you say nothing. And I'm, excuse me for losing my cool, I have nothing else.
Ryan, you asked if, if you thought you were alone in that sentiment, and you, at least from my standpoint, you are not alone in that, I feel very similar, but I am not, I wouldn't spend too much more time talking about that. I just wanted to, this is turning into kind of an EAC appreciation night from the work they've done, and I, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the work Jim and Curtis have, have done for Ready for 100. I asked the former liaison and on that committee, they've been working on this for a long time. Heidi's presentation for the single-use plastics ban resolution, while not a full ban, is the first step into cleaning up our township with single-use plastics. I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work our EAC is doing, all of our committees especially, everyone, all of our volunteers are doing great work. When these resolutions and proposals come to us, including things like the Parks and Rec building, bike trails and all that, it's because of the hard work that our volunteers have put in and the long hours that they do, you know, just for the betterment of the township. So thank you to the EAC tonight for your presentations.
Thanks, Dan, and I have had a really difficult time, board, and I apologize. I have not been able to concentrate in this meeting. I have spent all this meeting thinking about Ms. Chang's comments and then Ms. Quinn's comments, and I have to echo what they had to say. And Nancy, you have wasted a lot of our time, you have distracted this board, you have created a lot of resentment in our community from our residents, from people who aren't even our residents but who represent the larger community. You have to resign, we cannot continue like this. As Ryan said, we have spent a lot of time in this meeting room and outside this meeting room trying to clean up the mess that you've created. Your integrity is shot, it will never recover, you will never be able to fairly and adequately represent these, these residents in an ethical and honest way. You will never get that back. I'm asking you to resign. That's all I have right now.
Okay, under new business, Pebble Ridge and Wood Ridge sewer project. Letter from Bee Barshron to Stephanie Mason.
Need to approve this request number 32 for payment.
And the Subcommittee reviewed it last week and they're, they're okay with it.
Is there a motion to approve the payment?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And then zoning hearing board applications, we have two from one or two Runnings Lane, and let's deal with that one first. What do you recommend Ms., Ms. zoning hearing, Ms. zoning person?
I would recommend that it's a special exception for an accessory apartment that they, our zoning hearing board is quite capable of handling that one, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, and the second one is a similar, yes?
It's very similar, it's the same type of application, and I believe the ZHB can address that as well.
Is there a motion to approve?
You don't need to do anything, you just, you only tell you pass a motion if you sent, okay, I know.
Thank you.
Consensus.
Okay, so consensus is to go to the zoning hearing board, okay, thank you. Treasurer's report from January 18th, 2022, is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report, which was sent to you electronically?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for January 18th, 2022?
I'll make the motion to accept or approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next meeting of this Board of Supervisors is scheduled for Tuesday, February 15th at 7:00 PM, and Christmas tree drop-off, your probably last opportunity until January 31st, at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park, and it doesn't have a timeframe, so it sounds like you can do it at any time. Any other business? Hearing none, we're adjourned.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Oh, that's sweet.
That's not even-
Thank you.